The common goal, as I understand it, is to accurately track those entering and exiting that intersection. If the traffic counter is in the wrong location, it should be moved, and it should be put at that intersection but before Woodfern Road, so that it's capturing reliable, accurate data. Second, I'd like to know the dates that you intend to track the study. Are you, as of last week, for a three-day period, April 28th, 29th, and 30th, Hobart Avenue was closed and law enforcement was diverting traffic directly onto Fernwood and past the area where we believe the counters have been placed. I have photographs and video footage taken by me and many of my concerned neighbors. I'm happy to send that to you all, so you have a copy of it. It demonstrates the closure and the divergence for this extended period of time. If we're conducting a study, if you were conducting a study from April 28th to the 30th, you've recorded data that I've been told by local professionals is not representative of the ordinary and usual use of Fernwood. So either that needs to be explained as to why you would have that type of data in the study, or I think you should commit to disparting that data for those three days because it's not accurately reflecting the usual traffic on the road. I very much appreciate a response to those two questions. Perhaps Mr. Schreger should address them if he's the one coordinating on DOT with the study. I'd also like to just reiterate, and there's a third question here, and then I'll pause and let anybody who can speak to these issues. I'd also like to reiterate what I have expressed in my emails to this group since the abduction happened in front of my home. There is significant uncertainty and insecurity about our safety in the Summit community. That's a fact. There are residents all over town who are afraid to let their high schoolers walk to school without an adult, let alone their middle schoolers and their elementary students. I respectfully request that some representatives from this council and from the police department meet with some of our concerned residents and give our concerns the true voice that they deserve. Listen to our fears. Listen to our questions. We want to be heard, and we want to be heard in a positive and a productive way. And that's a question really to you, Madam Mayor. In closing, I'm not sure if any of you have traveled down Fernwood lately, but many of us have posted lawn signs, and we've begun to really engage as a community in activities aimed at demonstrating the significant support that we have for making our neighborhoods in Summit safer. It would be so wonderful.
I ask you to please wrap up.
I'm sorry. Just one more sentence. It would be wonderful to come together as a group of residents, law enforcement, and elected officials to work together and collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glassman, for your comments. And we are concerned about safety, and I'll give the Captain Zagorski an opportunity to talk about whatever he'd like to address on the safety front. I'm going to turn it over first to our city administrator, Michael Rogers, to talk about sort of the plan that we had put in place in terms of collecting information. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I can speak to some of what Ms. Glassman had referred to and the traffic counters. And I will just take a moment just to explain the difference of what we're doing, the terminology of a study and the counters that we actually we have out there. It's strictly about traffic counts at this point, and it's not in a very traditional sense of a study. I think that would be a more involved step. Certainly would cost significant dollars to do that. At this point, we're just trying to get traffic counts on Fernwood, which the placement of that, I relied upon our police department professionals and engineering division to locate it in the best possible location on that. And I understand you're questioning that. I'm not sure who you're referring to about local traffic professionals. But I rely upon our police department and engineers to place it in the right area of Fernwood. We could always go back and place it in a different area. And typically, what we'll do is to try to get traffic counts. My understanding is that we were putting that out for a week. It is my understanding that we put those out last Wednesday. Again, the location, I can defer to Captain Zagorski to confirm where that is. And we could also, once again, go out and perform more counts at another location if they're not already doing that, because I don't know if there's more than one of this on Fernwood.
Well, I guess my question, I'm sorry.
Ms. Glassman, let me just finish, and then I'll hand it back to Council President. And then on the second part of this is we intend to, I've asked the police chief to just go back for the last year and a half or so, and he may go back a longer period, to just look at the crime statistics in that general neighborhood area, and just so we can get an idea about discussion points and understanding what has happened. And then we intend to go through, back to our Public Safety Committee, have more discussion. I know the police chief has already reached out to some in that community, and some of the elected officials have had conversations. I think once we have this data and we know what we can speak to as far as some of the issues, I applaud you, Ms. Glassman, and the others in the community for being proactive about establishing deterrence in your neighborhood. I think that's a line of communication, and any form of communication you can do. The neighbors can speak to one another. And I will, I'll end it at this point, Council President, about what we just communicated to Ms. Glassman last week in my email.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. So Captain Zagorski, is there anything else you'd like to add from a safety perspective on this? I think you muted.
A little bit of novice at this, I'm sorry. Are you referring to the traffic or the incident kidnapping two weeks ago?
Traffic, but also if there's, you know, if there's any data that you have or any information that you could have that might allay some of the fears of the community that you are able to talk about. That's fine, too, whatever you're ready to talk about.
Regarding the traffic, unfortunately, I don't have any information on that. I would have to touch base with Lieutenant Richard from Traffic and Sergeant Daly, and I'd get that information to you as soon as tomorrow. And I apologize for that. Regarding the incident on a couple of weeks ago, that was a gut punch to all of us. Myself and Chief Bartolati, we met with two members from Fernwood Road, maybe about 10 days ago, we discussed it. You know, I can go over crime statistics and let you know that you're safe, and that was like a very rare occurrence. But like we discussed when we met 10 days ago, whether there is a lot of crime or no crime, if you don't feel safe, whether it's crime or not, that's still a problem. And that's what it sounds like I'm hearing from you tonight and that we heard at the meeting. And I'm willing to meet with, you know, anyone from Fernwood at any time I'm available. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions regarding the incident and, you know, hoping to put demise at ease.
Captain, I appreciate that.
Ms. Glassman, we're not going, this isn't a back and forth. This isn't a dialogue, okay?
You had a dialogue with Ms. Hamlet. I just wanted to raise one issue, collaboration. If there were collaboration, we understood what it is you're actually doing on Fernwood because there have been misreports in the press about a DOT study, and now I see it's just counting cars on days where we've diverted traffic. For three of those days, you've admitted that you've counted those cars. So I would, Captain, I respect you. I very much like to talk to you. I also have compiled some very interesting statistics about crime in this town as compared to Short Hills, Chatham, and Providence that I'd love to share with you. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And when we gather the traffic data, the counts, you'll have an opportunity to look at them. And also, the police department is gathering some crime statistics, and that will be made available as well. And I think at this point, a number of us have spoken with you or with Ms. Hamlet or other members of the community that are concerned. So there has been a lot of dialogue, but I think until we get that information, it might make sense to get that information so we are able to talk in an informed way about the next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. The only one that I've talked to has been Ms. Allen. No one else from the committee has responded directly or taken up the numerous overtures since the abduction in front of my home to meet with me personally. So I very much appreciate the opportunity to meet with any of you or all of you. I would very much welcome that. Thank you.
In fairness, a number of us have met with, have spoken to or met with Ms. Hamlet, and I believe you've also met with Chief Bartolati, so.
I have not. I have not ever met Mr. Chief Bartolati.
Okay, I was mistaken. It must have been someone else that was with Ms. Hamlet.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if there's nothing else on that topic, we'll move on to the next.
Council President, I think the mayor would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Look, no one wants anyone to feel unsafe, and safety is a number one priority. So what we want to do is get the traffic counts, and we may need to, as Mr. Rogers said, we may need to, it sounds like we may need to do it a little bit longer so we don't have those three days of perhaps incorrect information or misleading. We want the information from Chief Bartolati about crime statistics in Summit, particularly in that neighborhood. And then the Safety Committee will look at everything. We'll discuss it with Chief Bartolati, with Mr. Rogers, with Director Schreger, and then we'll make a plan. Certainly, conversations between elected officials and our professionals and the community is extremely important and always has been. Getting this information takes a little bit of time, and I'd like you to please bear with us. We are not ignoring this. And your email was addressed to Mr. Rogers, copying a lot of other people. He responded to you, and I think that was appropriate. But we really do care, and we will address this. So just please bear with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so we'll move on to the next comment. Let's see, we've got Stephen Spur. Go ahead, Mr. Spur.
All right. Good evening, Council President. This is Stephen Spur, 61 Woodland Avenue, though, to Ms. Hamlet's comments. I'm actually at the Washington School Playground tonight. So thanks for the Zoom meeting. It's made my five-year-old very happy. But just a quick question following on the mayor's comment and announcement today of the May 20th Broad Street West redevelopment hearing. Will, in that forum, there be some discussion, even pro forma discussion of financials regarding the project? This evening, I noted in the agenda, we will discuss a resolution about bidding for the firehouse. And as I understood the project, the firehouse was intended to, in some form, be paid for by the developer, obviously through some transfer of property to offset that cost. But it seems like those projects are diverging, the firehouse construction and Broad Street West redevelopment. And there's good reason for that. But just as we try to look at these projects together, as we look at them holistically, I'm curious where we can go as residents to better understand the financials around the broader Broad Street West redevelopment project.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Spur. And actually, the two are not diverging. You will, we are, we are in the process. There isn't anything public as far as the financials at this point, but we have engaged a professional to help us understand the financials, and they very much are linked. Mr. Rogers, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, as I think Mr. Spur could understand and others in the public, the financial analysis that's going on and just evaluating the developers' pro forma, those are part of, it's still a developing modeling process we're going through. We have some sense of what things are going, but there's a lot of negotiated terms that will affect certain numbers along the way. And it's just, this is a part of the negotiation process. Unfortunately, we won't be able to discuss specific numbers about it, but we do have a sense of what at least one project area, and based on the pro forma, what type of revenues they would generate for the town. And I think the council is, at least at this point, those who are looking at it are, have a comfort level. So we will continue down that process. Unfortunately, it's a negotiation process, and it's not done in public. So there just has to be some patience on that. But in due time, we'll get there, and it will be a part of what we negotiated in Redevelopers Agreement.
Okay. May I ask one quick follow-up? Sorry if it's permitted.
Go ahead, Mr. Spur.
Thank you, Council President. So just to that point on revenues, Mr. Rogers, do you have some anticipated time period where the public will have some insights into the projected net revenue for the municipality? So that's, you know, impact on commercial or residential taxation or pilot, for example. And I'm not going to hold you to it, a scout's honor, but just some sense, you know, as we continue, as the public try to be engaged in this project, the financials are important to us, as there's been some discussion of a net positive impact for residents on their property taxes. So just want to weigh in and know when roughly to expect that.
Understood. I think our collective goal is to certainly get a Redevelopers Agreement done. Is if there's any, at any point, we negotiate a term sheet, and it's something that we, and honestly, I'm not 100% certain whether we'd be even at that point be able to come out and the public can talk about it, because it really does feed into the overall Redevelopers Agreement, which will have to operate under a sort of a negotiated process and some degree of confidentiality. I hope by the end of the year, Mr. Spur, that we'd be able to get to this point where we can start to talk about it. And as far as any mention, and you mentioned a pilot agreement, that's something, again, that developers have to demonstrate it, and they have to meet what they call a "but-for" standard. And that, you know, but-for a pilot agreement, they wouldn't be able to really build a project. That's in the basic sense of it. So those are things that we're looking at, whether under an ordinary tax arrangement, and what that would produce for the municipality, and what that would certainly yield for the developer. And that's just what we're evaluating. I hope by the end of this year that we'll be able to come out with that information.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Naidoo, you had.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure that, and I know this will be talked later on, so, but I want to just make sure everybody understands, since we're having this discussion right now, what exactly is on the agenda tonight. It's not a contract to go ahead and construct. It's going out and putting out a bid to get bidders involved in the firehouse. So Mr. Spur points out, and I have pointed out for years on end, my thinking about this project, and since actually when I began in council, I've always thought of them in tandem between the redevelopment project and the fire station. So that's not changed in my mind ever. But what we're trying to do tonight is simply put out a bid. So let's make sure the public understands that all we're doing is trying to seek out who is going to be interested in bidding on a fire station. As former council members used to say, you get a couple of bites of the apple at this kind of project. This is not the one and only bite of the apple. And so after this, once we get a bidder, we will get a contract. We will know prices with regard to the fire station. We will also be further along in our own internal evaluation, as well as our discussions with the developers. And as Mr. Rogers says, there's an appropriate time and place for getting everything out there. But certainly, members of council internally will know much more as we're going down this road, as we get more solidified about stuff. So just want to make sure the public understands that it's not as if, I don't want people walking away thinking that we've now bid on a building, and it's going to go forward with X number of dollars and so forth. That's not what we're doing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Okay, moving on, our next commenter, Dennis Alaco. Go ahead, Mr. Alaco.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, Mayor Rades and members of council. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak tonight. And within my short allotted time, I will attempt to recap some information.
Can you just please state your address? We need to go back to doing that.
My apologies. Dennis Alaco, 25 Stockton Road here in Summit.
Thank you.
No problem.
Go ahead.
We'll attempt to recap some information that I've acquired through an Open Public Record Act request, as well as raising some additional questions based upon comments made by council as part of the recently passed gas-powered leaf ban, leaf blower trial ban. We have heard as part of council's comments, when reviewing this matter, government, as part of the rules of governing, do something. While this certainly makes sense, doing something doesn't always mean we have to have an end result of new laws or ordinances. Doing something can simply mean we looked at an issue, evaluated all aspects of it, ultimately decided that it did not require action, or the timing of such changes would not be deemed appropriate. With respect to this issue, we have somehow figured out a way to take what has simply turned out to be a noise complaints, all 12 of them. In an effort to support the position, we now speak of issues such as pollutants, personal health concerns, all of which will continue to exist with the utilization of battery-powered or electric equipment. As part of the public comment portion on the night of the ban's passing, those of us who had questions or concerns were told to, quote, "respect the process, even if you don't agree with the ban." While I certainly am not in a position to speak for others, but I will speak for myself by saying, I would and could respect the process if, in fact, the process had been conducted with greater levels of transparency, greater level of distributed information that was collected as part of the ad hoc committee's duties, as well as a tangible measuring system, which will ultimately determine the future of this trial ban or efforts to have it remain in place on a permanent basis. We were told that the ad hoc committee was formed to conduct research on the topic, so that in the end, council could make an informed decision. We heard that lots of information had been gathered, digested, and shared with members of council. We were also told that the ordinance was drafted with very few negative comments or pushback from the public after hearing all sides. Some of these comments do not appear to be completely factual. As an example, I am sure the majority of those who were opposed to the ban had very little knowledge that this ordinance was being proposed until it started picking up steam on various social media outlets. Comments from various council members leading up to the actual vote on the ordinance led me to believe that their minds had already been made up, regardless of public comments that would have been heard that evening. If that is, in fact, the case, how can we sit and honestly say that we have heard and taken into account all sides? Perception amongst many now is that regardless of what the public says, it doesn't seem to quite matter. If we truly have a representative form of government, and we are looking for a balance, I would think that we could do a better job the next time. 12 noise complaints, in my mind, does not equate with balance. Moreover, was somewhat shocked and dismayed upon receiving the results of my Oprah request, find that there was not, in fact, an actual report or document prepared or submitted by the ad hoc committee that could substantiate decision-making of council. Even more troubling was finding out that one of the landscaping companies that was part of the ad hoc committee relied upon, or input, in fact, have a substantial stake in how they responded, since they currently hold the contract with the City of Summit.
Mr. Alaco, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Your three minutes are up. You can finish your sentence.
If you don't mind, Council President, I'd appreciate just a slight bit more latitude.
Only, you can have to, you know, finish your thought, but please, we have other people waiting to comment.
I understand. Part of the ad hoc committee relied upon input for the fact that they did have a substantial stake in how they responded, since they currently hold the City of Summit contract for landscaping services. In my mind, they have 158,000 reasons why they should say a piece of equipment isn't used much during the ban period, and respond the way they did. This provides the perception of a conflict of interest and clouds whatever transparency may have been intended. Considering the amount of Summit residents that voiced concerns leading into the evening of the vote, I would have thought the council as a whole would have considered delaying the vote, continuing to entertain potential alternatives. Individual residents have concerns.
Your time is up, please. I've gone, I've let you go way over. We're done.
I don't appreciate that.
Well, that's the rules, and I, you know, I'm equally applying it to everyone. It's three minutes. I let you go over. I gave.
So with all due respect, Ms. Fox, how exactly, as residents, are we to get our concerns across to council if we don't have more than three minutes?
Sir, under the Open Public Meeting Act, we allot time for each person to speak. There are other people waiting to speak. You've had more than three minutes, and that's how we control meetings. We don't let people run over the three minutes. We gave you some grace period, but your time is over.
Mr. Jacobia, I believe the previous comment.
If you have a difficult comment, sir, you're free to email them to the council.
Yeah, Mr. Alaco, we've, a number of us have spoken to you. We have, you know, we are available to speak to you. But, you know, first of all, I'm not sure where you got the 12 complaints. That seems to be a number that people are throwing out there, but they're over the course.
That actually was provided by Councilwoman Little.
I don't think that's correct, and I would.
I think, I think we should check the record.
Me, Mr. Alaco, this is not a back and forth. I am now responding to what you've said, and I would ask you to let me finish my sentence.
Sure.
So what, we, a number of council members over the course of a number of years have received complaints about leaf blowers and leaf blower noise. And there have been, and even if you look back at the minutes for the past year, there have been complaints since, that have gotten, they've intensified since COVID shutdowns. And, you know, as far back as March of last year, people, members of the public were coming to us and asking us to do something about it. And at each step along the way, Councilmember Little informed members of the public who attended the council meetings what was happening and what the Capitol Projects Committee was doing. So this, it should not have come as a surprise to people who are paying attention. So as far as the process, the ad hoc committee is not, there was never, you know, a representation that there was a report. The ad hoc committee was a working group to discuss, you know, to gather information and to learn about the issue. I'm going to let Councilmember Little jump in if she has anything further to add on that topic.
I would just reiterate what you said, Council President. It was a working committee. We purposely reached out to members of the landscaping committee so we could get their views and hear. I'm going to take a lot of exception to the fact that you think that there was something underhanded or that the landscapers had some kind of stake in this. They absolutely did not. And they volunteered their time freely and gave us their opinion about how their business runs and operates and how a ban might affect their business. There's no special treatment that was given or any kind of, you know, I just take a lot of exception to your comment, and I think it was incredibly unfair. And I think, you know, I'm quite disturbed by it, to be honest.
I'm sorry if you feel that way.
Back and forth. I'm answering your response. And that it was a working committee to talk about these issues and figure out the best way to go forward and to look at different sides of the issue. There was never any representation that a formal report would be made, and that was not done. These were all volunteers who volunteered their time to help us with this issue, as we have done with other issues in the ad hoc committees. We did, I don't, you know, we had, I think, 140 total emails, and there were actually more emails in favor of the ban than against the ban. And there were a number of people that spoke at the meeting. We spoke for almost three hours, I believe, about this in public comments. And there were more people that spoke in favor of the ban than against the ban at the council meeting. So to say that this was a minor issue that doesn't affect a lot of residents, I also take issue with that. We've done our very best to look at this issue from all, from all sides, engaging with lots and lots of different residents over a period of almost a year, and looking at this from all kinds of different research. And we all put an enormous amount of time and effort into this issue, trying to come up with a solution that addressed both the needs of the people that were negatively impacted by the noise and environmental impacts of the gas leaf blowers, and tried to balance that with the needs of residents and landscapers in the town. We have done our very best to come up with a solution. We are doing it as a pilot to try it, to see how it works. And I think that is the most fair way to have addressed all the needs that were expressed through emails, through conversations, through outreach, and through people that came to the meeting and spoke and have addressed us in various ways over the years. I don't know what else to say. We are going to try it. It passed. It's done. We are going to be addressing the hardship exemption later tonight. And if you have any other issues, please feel free to reach out to my email.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Little. Are there any other comments from members of council on this? Okay, so we're going to move on now to Rachel Kramer.
Unbelievable.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Kramer. Can you state your full name and address? Oops, I just, I'm sorry. I think I muted you. I apologize, Ms. Kramer. Let me try again. Try, try that again. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm back.
Yep, sorry about that.
Okay, that's okay. Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. I will hold off on my questions regarding the hardship exemption until that's addressed later in the meeting. But if you want to comment on a couple of other things that have come up, in the first.
I don't know what's happening here. We're having a little problem. Let's go, let's try that again.
Okay, I'm on, okay. Okay, I mean, okay. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, okay. So I'm gonna make a few comments on things that have already been addressed in the first hour and hold my comments on the hardship waiver until that's addressed later in the meeting. The 12 or 11 complaint number is on the record. It did come from Ms. Little. I do agree that there was probably more complaints, but that is a number that, for those of us who have been paying attention, we did hear that number. So maybe that increased after the pandemic. But that's sort of where that came from. I also submitted a request asking for more information about the information the ad hoc committee put together. I've yet to receive any of that. I would think that if the information was readily available and it informs the new law that's on the book and summit, you guys would not have any issues in sharing it with the public. But it does seem like there has been some pushback since that information's been requested. Or delays, I'm not really sure what the reason is, but any of the information put together by the ad hoc committee has not been shared yet. So I guess we'll just wait for my requests like Dennis did. The other thing that I wanted to comment on was Delia, Ms. Hamlet mentioned, potentially keeping these meetings open to Zoom. And I don't see why there's any reason that council meetings can't continue in person and via Zoom when restrictions are lifted. I would think that council does want to create a more inclusive environment for these meetings. And if there's any way to do that, obviously doing them via Zoom is one. So I'd be interested to hear why that would not be on the table once in-person meetings open up.
Okay, is that it for your comments, Ms. Kramer?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So the reason that we are not going to, we are not doing a hybrid meeting because it's, we actually did a couple of those early on. They're very difficult to run. It's difficult to have some people in person, some people hybrid. It's not something we've ever done. We've, you know, council has been meeting for 100 plus years in this community without a Zoom approach and.
I would say that just because something's always been done one way doesn't mean it should always continue that way. We have.
Council President, let me, let me answer this question.
Sure, go ahead.
The, the bottom line is, is that Zoom is an exception. The local finance board through the Department of Community Affairs, because of the pandemic and declared state of emergency, permitted open public meetings. In this rare exception of a declared state of emergency, to utilize platforms such as Zoom, Google meets, et cetera. When the declared state of emergency abates and as we see Governor Murphy, Governor Cuomo, and the other governors are starting to reopen everything, you will not be permitted to utilize Zoom. You have to use the Open Public Meeting Act, which is a public meeting where the public is invited. You also have in the City of Summit televised all your meetings through Hometown TV and you've been doing it through live on YouTube. So the public will still be able to watch the meetings if they don't want to come to the council meetings, but you're not going to be able to continue the Zoom format unless there's a legislative change. This was an exception that was passed because of the declared state of emergency due to the pandemic of COVID-19.
So we won't be able to, we won't be able to participate unless we come to meetings in person.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. And as far as the 12, the number 12 on the, the complaints, I'm going to ask Ms. Little because I, I don't know where that number is coming from. I don't believe that was ever a number that was given.
I believe that when I presented the ordinance, I believe we had received 12 formal complaints when we started looking into the issue and form and, and started addressing it at council meetings. I think that that's what, where that number came from. And I think it was, I think I had said that we had received at least 12 that I could count in the months, like, you know, in the spring and the summer. And that's when we started looking into this issue.
That wasn't a made up number.
This is not a back and forth. I don't.
Tell you this, Ms. Kramer.
I'm trying to answer your, your question. I, I believe, you know, I, we sometimes look into issues based on one complaint. We sometimes base, you know, we look into issues based on a conversation that someone has with us in a parking lot sometimes. To receive 12 formal complaints of people that have either reached out to council by email or by public comment at a meeting, that's, that's, that's a significant number of complaints that we've received from the public. So that's when we started looking to the issue, talking about, you know, what steps could be taken next and started looking to the possibility of developing an ad hoc committee. So, you know, that, that wasn't a magic number or, you know, a, you know, we don't, we don't have a cutoff for a number of comments that, that cause us to look at an issue. It can be anything. But I believe I'd said that I did go back in the spring and the summer and I looked and there were at least a dozen complaints.
All right, okay. I think we've covered that question. We have one more person who's got a hand up. That's Ryan Felmit. Go ahead, Mr. Felmit.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Ryan Felmit, 57 Madison Ave. Just a couple of points I wanted to touch on, not to be a dead horse, but on the Town Hall opening back up. Just to clarify, it's a legal, it's a legal precedent that there will be no option for a hybrid. Is that what Mr. Giacobi was explaining in the, to the last speaker? Is it a legal precedent set by the state that there will be no option for a hybrid Zoom slash live meeting? Is that what the?
Once the state of urgency is lifted, that's correct.
Okay, because I agree with everyone else. It would obviously highly increase the engagement with the public to have an hybrid approach. I think if our schools can do it and everyone else can do it, we should be able to do it as adults on a, on a public meeting as well. But to get on to other points, just a couple of things on the Bristol Myers Squibb noise emanating from Bristol Myers Squibb, we've, the neighbors have yet to see any mitigation in, in the form of, of, of sound and, and from the air conditioning annoyance coming from Bristol Myers as recently as today. So, you know, we submitted much, to my knowledge, many more than 12 complaints via email, public complaints on, on this committee, police reports and so on and so forth. So we hope to continue to work with the, the members of the council and the mayor and, and the powers that be to fix that issue. But just want to make sure that that's, that's still pointed out in front and center because it's very important to our section of the neighborhood down here. And a couple of other things on the ad hoc committee, not, not the GLB one, but in, in general, I think I brought this up in the last meeting, it would be, it'd be very helpful to know what ad hoc committees are existing. If it was just a one-line item on the city page, I, I was searching for basically the JCP and L ad hoc committee. I think my sheriff, council member Nidu is still in charge of that one. But I was looking for a status update, hoping to see, you know, where we're at with that. I think that started over a year ago or maybe about 10, 12 months ago. So council member Nidu, if you have an update on the ad hoc committee for JCP and L and the power issues, that would be extremely helpful. And related to that, another comment, I spoke to a BPU commissioner. Apparently there was, just as an example, there was a, there was a large issue with New Jersey that came up in terms of Altice One taking over Cable Vision. So a bunch of municipalities basically combined together and mayors and, and council members and met with the BPU, had stakeholder meetings and they're working on coming up with, with solutions, financial penalties and things that basically the, the cable company did not agree to. So I'm wondering if any of this coalition type of stuff with the municipalities as it relates to JCP and L has been, if that's progressed and specifically if there's anything going on in town with the, with our municipality. What are we doing as far as under the ad hoc committee?
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
So I know a lot of things in there. So we are still working with, on the Bristol Myers issue and we recognize that this is a concern and we, you know, there has been a lot of time and effort on the mayor and council and city staff side of things to address this issue. And, you know, we, we have met with you numerous times. We have spoken to, you know, to all the involved parties. You know, it's, 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 this is not an easy solution and we are trying to get some answers. I will let the mayor or, or the city administrator jump in if there's something else that they can update on that topic. And we'll start with that, I guess, if anyone has anything to update on that. I guess not. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there, as far as any direct conversations with Bristol Myers Squibb representatives, I haven't had any recent conversations with them, so I have nothing to update. I mean, I, I'm still going on the fact that they are, that they've stated they've, I've identified some equipment that they would be replacing certain equipment. So I don't have any further information at this point to, to update everyone on the replacement of such. So mayor, I'm not sure if you've heard anything.
Um, yeah, the, the replacement has been completed, but in conversations with the neighbors, they say the noise is not any better. It's just different. So there was a pre-hearing conference on Friday. I don't know how effective it was. I suspect there'll be another one with more information. But we have to kind of, we can't, until the hearing is settled and, and Bristol Myers responds to, to the hearing, we can't force them to do anything. But we are, well, we're meeting internally on Thursday. There are, we're doing everything we can, but it's not as, it's not, it's not a simple solution and we want to do what we can. I, I'm frustrated as well as you are, Mr. Felmit and the neighbors, but we haven't given up and we're still, we're still working on it.
Thank you.
And council member Nidu, do you have anything to update on the BPU?
Certainly. But before that, I want to join the mayor and, and saying that I too, I'm frustrated with regard to the noise dealing with the Bristol Myers Squibb issue. I've seen Mr. Felmit's email. I've seen other folks' email in that neighborhood. I care very much about what has happened, what continues to happen there. It's a, and I, but I know also that there's a lot of communication going on behind the scenes, that people are trying to try to figure out a solution. It is a difficult, complicated problem. Sometimes the information that's, that's acquired doesn't necessarily move the ball forward in the way that one hopes that it would have. And so there's all of those types of issues. But I share the concern, the frustration and the sentiments of the people who live in that neighborhood. They have a right to have a quiet neighborhood and enjoy it. I firmly believe that. So that, let me address that. Second, with regard to Mr. Felmit's question about the ad hoc committee. I mean, maybe, maybe it's our terminology we should work on. This is, this is the admin committee expanded, right? It's a councilwoman Allen, myself is an admin committee, Michael Rogers. And then the mayor and council president Fox are constituted what, I guess we should just call it a working group, if you will. Maybe that's a better terminology. Maybe that explains better for folks what we are. And so we are the working group, if you will, to outreach to Bristol Myers, I mean, not to Bristol Myers, sorry, to JCP and L. We had before councilwoman Allen joined us a conversation with Carol Bianchi. We haven't had a recent conversation with her. So we are due for a conversation. Part of that conversation at that time, she was restricted in what she was sharing because BPU still had to make submissions to, I mean, I'm sorry, JCP and L still had to make submissions to the BPU. And so therefore she was, but in the meantime, I know that they have worked with Aaron Schrager with regard to tree management, other issues associated with maintenance and so forth that have occurred in the natural course of things. But we should have a, we will have, we should have and we will have in the near term a conversation with her with regard to the upgrades, because one of the things that the BPU required them to do was to do upgrades. And they were going to do it. We'll find out what those upgrades were and how they're progressing with them.
Okay. Thank you, council member Nidu. So are there any other comments from members of the public during, for public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, the public comment period, and we will move on to ordinances for hearing. So Madam Clerk, could you please read the first ordinance for hearing? I think you're muted.
Okay, very sorry. I'll repeat that. Ordinance number 21-3234 and ordinance amending chapter three, police regulations, section 3-8, noise restrictions, subsection 3-8.1, noise prohibitions to provide for a hardship waiver to the gas-powered leaf blower pilot program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little, would you like to, to move this ordinance?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is to add a hardship exemption to the pilot program for the ban of gas-powered leaf blowers for the summer that we have been discussing at great length. As we heard, many of the email comments and comments at the meeting, there are a number of residents who are very much in favor of, in asking us to put in, impose a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, as well as many people that were opposed for a number of different reasons. We really attempted to balance the needs of all the constituents in the community. And what we came up with was a trial ban for the period of the summer when the need for gas leaf blowers is, is at its lowest point. However, in some of the commentary and outreach that we did, we heard that there may be specific instances of people that might be adverse, particularly adversely affected during that period of the summer in, in a way that it's unintended. So we came up with the idea of having a hardship exemption that could be applied for and would be reviewed by the Department of, the Director of Community Services that would allow for an exemption for specific and unforeseen hardships. This would not be for a blanket exemption for the whole period of the summer or for a whole industry. Rather, it would be for a specific instance and the relief would be narrowly tailored to fit the hardship. So an example might be that, you know, we heard that in, when, maybe when putting on a new roof for a building, it might be necessary to blow the roof so that there's absolutely no debris on it before putting the shingles on, something like that. So that might be an instance where you would, you would need to use a gas leaf blower. And despite trying to tailor the ban to the summer months when it wouldn't be, you know, unnecessarily harmful, is that my particular instance? So it was, it's for, it's intended to be for specific hardships. Those hardships would be alleged in the request for relief and the relief would be narrowly tailored to address the actual hardship. So I would like to open ordinance now for hearing on this matter.
Second.
Okay, so are there any members of council who have comments on this ordinance? Okay, members of the public. So Ms. Kramer, go ahead.
Hi, I'm, do I'm going to repeat my address for the record?
Madam Clerk, is that helpful or does it not matter?
88 Elm Street.
Thank you.
Of course. I read the ordinance. I do have some questions about it. I guess Mr. Schrager is going to be the one that is approving the hardship ordinance, I mean, the hardship exemptions. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. So it says that the director shall only grant a waiver sparingly and not as a matter of routine. Can you elaborate on, well, if there will be a certain number of waivers capped? Or is this going to be limited? Or are you willing to consider anybody and everybody that submits an exemption?
Councilmember Little, would you like to?
I believe all exemptions are going to be considered. There's no cap. But I will state that the exemptions are for specific hardships. It wouldn't be granted for, you know, someone wouldn't be granted an exemption, blanket exemption for the whole period of the ban. It would be for a specific hardship in a specific instance.
Okay, so just to be clear, a lot of the opposition came from the business, the financial impact to small businesses over the summer. So granting this sparingly or not for the entire period sort of defeats that purpose. Based on the language in the ordinance, it seems like the director is going to have oversight into all decisions about whether the waivers will be granted. Are there any guidelines or parameters in place to ensure the fair and unbiased distribution of? Are there any guidelines or parameters in place to ensure the fair and unbiased distribution of these waivers? If you, if there are parameters in place, can you please confirm what they are?
The ordinance speaks for itself on that matter.
It it doesn't actually speak for itself. It doesn't have any guidelines or limitations. For example, if I have a gas leaf blower, which I don't, but I can't afford to buy a new one, that, I don't, is something funny, Mr. Vartan? Because I noticed that you were laughing. I mean, like.
You're not going to do this. You don't address members of the council.
I, if I said something that was funny, I mean, you're encouraging people to come and speak, and then a council member is publicly laughing on video. So thank you for that.
I don't think, you know, I think we should move on. Your time is, you know, your time that you're using on this.
Right, so my question is, are there parameters in place around the word, around the waiver?
When you're done your comments, Ms. Kramer, I'll address them.
And the last question is, you're looking for proof that a hardship exists. Can you provide examples of what type of proof you need?
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ms. Kramer. Mr. Jacoby, did you want to take this?
Yes. The ordinance speaks for itself. I've got a lot of feedback. So if Ms. Kramer could please mute herself, I'd appreciate it. The ordinance speaks for itself. First off, the ordinance, there's a temporary ban. It's a pilot program during the months of summer. If people have a specific need, for example, somebody's going to be having a wedding in their backyard, and they need to have a leaf blower, that would be an application that they could make to Mr. Schrager, and he could evaluate it. It's not going to be a blanket waiver. It's very clear that it's done. It's going to set forth the duration, the address where the waiver will apply, the description of the interim noise control measures, which are to be taken by the applicant to minimize the noise, such as, are you doing it at 10 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock in the morning, etc.? It's going to be done on a case-by-case basis. Mr. Schrager, who's the director, will assess it, work with the resident to address whether or not they have a specific need for it, and it'll be addressed. And again, let's not forget, the original ordinance bans it for the pilot period during the summer months. This will give an exception when people need to utilize it during that time period for a specific reason. And the ordinance is very clear, and that's what is going to be followed with Mr. Schrager. If there's specific questions, Mr. Schrager has the ability to seek legal counsel from us on a specific issue.
Can you speak to the proof that's required?
We're not going to get into back and forth. I already spoke to it. Thank you.
All right, moving on, the next commenter, Ms. Hamlet, did you have your hand up again? Did you intend to speak?
I sure do.
Okay.
Yep, sorry, I know.
Your hand was up.
Yeah, I'm actually not that interested in leaf blowers, but I, you know, I understand everybody's passion around it. So I actually called my landscaper the other day, and I said, I've been with him 10 years. He's one of the bigger landscapers in town. I said, hey, what do you think about this? And he said, you know, had everybody engaged, all of us in the beginning, then maybe we we could have given an answer. And so, you know, I'm trying to understand all this. And he said, bottom line is, everybody who has a lawn company is going to pay more because your lawns are now being blown off with a toy, right? Which, whatever, I don't care. Whatever you all want to do about the gas leaf blowers, I don't have that much of an interest because it doesn't matter to me. What I will tell you is that our efforts for Captain Zagorski, our efforts should be fighting crime, not ticketing gas leaf blower people. So everybody in Summit should know they're going to pay more now because we've approved this, which I just am not informed enough about. We're going to pay more to have our lawns blown out. Canoe Brook has had to hire a lawyer because we can't use them within X number of feet with houses. Bottom line is, we're going to pay more, from what I understand, because we're blowing our lawns off now with toys. And these heroes who are trying to fight crime are more worried about giving tickets for leaf blowers. So someone tell me where, what I'm missing here. That's it. That's all I have.
Your comment.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Any other comments from, from members of the public? Okay, all right, Ms. Gagnon, go ahead. I think I got, I think, yeah.
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road.
Go ahead, Ms. Gagnon.
Hi, through this hardship waiver, I was under the impression, I've been on all these council calls since this started, and I was really under the impression that this hardship waiver would have addressed the underserved community a little bit more. And I'm really upset with the council for not addressing that. And I know the mayor and I have worked closely with the underserved community in this town, and she knows how hard these people work in our town. So to address weddings and roofers who need it for a small temporary ban, I just want to say that I'm really upset with the council for not looking at the underserved people in our community and the people who need it financially through this, through this time period. So I really thought that this hardship waiver, when you first introduced it and talked about it, was really going to look and help those people who need it financially. Grace's Pantry helps 500 people a week, families a week. That's almost 2,000 people. And we, we try to provide food and supplies for them. And I don't think that the council people understand that our community here needs our help. And if you guys could just give a little bit of time to working within the community and going out within the community and seeing how hard these people work to put food on the table, that they don't have the money to spend $300, $400 on one blower and then all of these batteries. I just really think, like Delia had said, that, you know, we're fighting crime with, you know, these, these cops, we need them out on the streets. This, this crime to stop people from using their gas blowers, it's not acceptable. Right now, we need them fighting bigger battles. So I'm really upset with the council that this hardship waiver is not looking at the underserved and the financially, people that need it financially more so. So that's my comment. And I really think long and hard that, you know, next year, when you reevaluate this, you'll look at the people in our community that really need our help. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Gagnon, and we do care about people in the community, and we are aware of Grace. In fact, council has, and the city has done quite a bit to support the work of Grace. Many of us individually have done work to support Grace, have volunteered for Grace, have donated funds to Grace. So I think, you know, I think when you say that we don't care about this, we are well aware of it, we do care. We engaged landscapers to talk to them about how to do this in a way to not require people to purchase new equipment. We were told by the landscapers that we spoke to that this was doable with the equipment that they had during the summer months. And in fact, we were, the landscapers association wrote us a letter saying that what we had done was doable and reasonable and fair and even-handed. And that's a letter that was in the record, and you can go back and look at it.
I'm fully aware of that.
You had your turn to talk. We are not doing this. I, I can't say it enough times. This is not an argument in a back and forth. You had your time to talk. I am now responding. Okay, so I think that's, I think I addressed those concerns. If there's anything that anyone else on council wants to respond to, feel free, Councilmember Little.
I'm just going to say one more comment. I just, I, I just want the community to understand and the people on this call to understand that we all understand that there are people that don't agree with what has happened. There are people that, that want us, there are people on both sides of the issue who don't agree with what we're doing. There are lots of people who want us to put in place a permanent ban on gas leaf blowers. There are lots of people who asked us to do a year-round ban on leaf blowers. There are lots of people who asked us to go further, and there are certainly a lot of people that disagree that we're having this ban at all. We have a number of residents in the community on both sides who feel very, very strongly about this issue. Every person on this council, and particularly the CAP Committee and the people that volunteered their time on the Ad hoc Committee Working Group, whatever you want to call it, put in an enormous amount of time and effort to look at all sides of this issue and to engage with lots of different people with lots of differing opinions and tried our very, very best to come up with a solution that would benefit the people that were asking us to do something about this issue while not real, putting too much of a burden on the people who are asking us not to do the ban. We have really worked incredibly hard to come up with a solution that is narrowly tailored to address the problem, to research it and see how it works, and then to get the feedback and see if we want to make this a more permanent solution. We have all worked very hard, put a lot of time in this, and done a lot of listening. And there's been a lot of engagement with the community. So I'm, I understand that some people do not agree with this decision, but we've done, we really have done everything that we can to listen and to come up with a solution that we feel best fits this situation. So I understand the frustration that people have that don't agree with that decision, but I really would ask you to watch the, the comments and the rhetoric that say that we don't care or that certain people that were involved in this process were out for themselves or doing things that weren't above board or transparent, because that's just not fair and it's not true. And this exemption is just one piece of that, because we did listen to a lot of the comments. We did want to go even further than a limited summer ban that is a pilot project and allow for this hardship exemption for any specific instances that went, that are, that go too far and that impact people in a way that we didn't intend to. So I just want to really reiterate that, you know, there has been a lot of time and effort that went into this. This is, this is a long process.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to address two things. One, this is a hardship exemption, right? Councilwoman Little, the city solicitor gave specific examples. That's not the only set of examples. We're not confining it to those things that they said. And I think people who are hearing it may get the impression that, oh, it's only to one thing or two things. It's not. It's called a hardship exemption. We created a pretty, I think, a pretty open thing for the Director of Community Services to have a dialogue with a person who's applying and to explain their situation. We do this in other situations. This is not the only way that we have for, for other situations where we have exemption processes. We have a dialogue with the entity that needs the thing, the exemption, and there's a discussion. The second thing, I heard now two commentators talk about the police department and whether or not their capability to do this, as well as their other duties, or what component of their time would it be occupied by this. As with anything the council does, it requires police resources, whether it's, you know, for other issues that people want them to do X, Y, or Z, or this issue, what have you. But we also have a process where if the police department, the fire department, if other departments thought that this was something that was outside of their bailiwick, that they could not do, that would put an undue burden or strain on their ability to perform the other core functions, because we take public safety very seriously here. Nobody's, nobody's dismissing public safety or anything like that. If that was the case, then I'm sure we would have heard back from our chief, which we did not. And we certainly, if the police chief had said to us at any point in time, this cannot be done in comparison to the other duties that we have, we certainly would have taken that. That's how these things are done. We have communications, but with city staff. Before things are done, we have communications with the Department of Community Services. Can this be done? Do we have the clerk's office? Can this form be done? Those things all happen. Now, we can't have every meeting where we share with every little detail. But just like in your organization, if you are at a professional offices or you're at any other place, you know, there's a lot of backend stuff that goes on that before the finished product is there, that's delivered. Same thing happens in this government. There's a lot of backend communications that go on behind the scenes with different departments, and different departments have their input, and they're not shy to give their input. If they think that something is not doable, not feasible in the timeframe, they will tell us. They'll say, back off, that doesn't work, this can't be done. So I just want to put people's minds, I'm hoping that puts a little bit more at ease, that don't presuppose the outcome, and don't think that this cannot be done in an effective manner that still preserves public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. We have one more public comment. Mr. Felton, go ahead.
All right, it's Ryan again, 57 Madison Ave. I think David, Councilmember Naidoo, just commented on what I was going to ask, which was just a basic resource question. I was hoping to hear from Captain Zakorski on this, because I don't think it was, well, I did not hear it covered extensively in the last three-hour meeting, as far as the resource diversion to gas leaf blower, whatever, compliance. So like the real-world example that David just laid out in terms of if we were given extra projects and whatnot, and we would obviously require more resources in order to do that. So I guess the question I had is, is, was the, is the Summit Police Department, were they under-resourced, were they over, sorry, did they not have enough capacity originally, and they were able to absorb this extra into their duties? Or like, how do we think about that? Is it just, are we not expecting a lot of complaints, and that's how it'll fit into the mix of everything that's going on? But I think a lot of it was just explained. But if there's anything else that the captain can add to that, that would be extremely helpful to, as David said, continue to put people's minds at ease.
Okay, before, Council President, before, before Captain Zagorski answers, just to make sure that people understand what I'm saying, right? What I'm saying is, obviously, the police have core functions that they need to do. Captain Zagorski knows exactly what they are. I don't need to tell him what his core functions are. This is added, this, this, there's a lot of stuff we always add to the plate in any different types of stuff, and the police have to absorb it. Captain Zagorski, I think if, if any police officer will say something, it will say, I need more resources, always. And he should. That's what, what the police department will always say, and that will, the fire department will say, and that's, but they also understand that where the prioritization is, I don't think I need to tell the captain nor the police department where the prioritization is. They know what stuff really needs to be taken care of, where this falls into the rubric, how things are done. And so I think I want to make myself clear, so people don't get a misimpression that I'm saying, oh, of course, the police was, they're under, they don't have any enough work. That's certainly not what I'm saying. I'm saying, the police, of course, have a lot of work to do, but the police also know how to prioritize work, and they know how to absorb work and how to deal with it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. And in fact, Mr. Felton, we did speak with Chief Bartolotti about this before this for this ordinance was proposed. There was a discussion and, you know, with the city departments to make sure that there were resources to do this. And I don't think that anyone expects that if there's a crime in progress, they're going to, the police are going to ignore a crime in progress to be issuing a ticket for a leaf blower. They, you know, the police spend, you know, their time doing a number of different things. And, you know, it's just like a noise complaint in your neighborhood. When you make a noise complaint, if there's a crime in progress, they may not come to your noise complaint immediately because they're dealing with a crime. So I think, you know, the police are well aware of those issues and are capable of addressing how to prioritize what is, you know, the public safety function, which is the most important function. So if Captain Zagorski has anything to add, I will turn it over to him.
Ms. Fox, you pretty much covered it. You took the words out of my mouth. I mean, we're here to protect and serve. We have you throw at us, we'll deal with it.
Thank you, Captain. We appreciate it. Okay, so, let's see.
Councilwoman Harrison has her.
I'm sorry, Ms., come on, go ahead. Councilwoman Harrison.
Thank you, Council President. I, I really did want to echo what Councilmember Naidoo said about our conversation in safety and health. We looked at this from a public safety and much more so a public health discussion, but number one advice we looked for from Chief Bartolotti was enforcement. And in response to Ms. Gagnon, we asked about this in terms of the folks who are personal landscape, not the big companies, how that would be, what type of impact it would be on them in terms of enforcement. We asked absolutely about health concerns, and that's why I appreciate Councilwoman Little talking about there are folks who And that's why I appreciate Councilwoman Little, uh, talking about there are folks who don't think we have gone, uh, far enough on it. It's, it's a balance, uh, and why we're paid an extra $5 to make these hard decisions. Uh, joking, no payment is made here at all. But, um, we really did ask, uh, how will, uh, not only the police, but also, um, Director Strager, um, to really, uh, look at this, uh, from a, uh, community perspective. And, um, it doesn't seem obvious to you all, uh, who are weighing in now. I'm not bothered by your passion and anger. It makes us, it makes us better. But I will, um, echo, um, the, uh, uh, request that you, uh, be careful about saying, we don't care. Because I know each person, each staff member cares deeply. And, um, I just want, I just think it's important to echo that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. We have one more member of the public whose hand is raised. Uh, Mr. Alaco, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And I promise I won't engage in a back and forth and I will be very brief. As part of my comments earlier, I never got to the punchline. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank both Councilwoman Allen and Mayor Raddus for their honesty. And for taking the position they did with their comments on the evening of the vote on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, all right. So if there are no other members of the public, uh, with comments, um, are, are there other members of council who'd like to say anything else before we close the hearing? Okay, seeing none, um, let's, uh, I'm going to declare the room closed. And we will move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, ordinance number 21 dash 3234. An ordinance amending Chapter 3, Police Regulations, Section 3-8, Noise Restrictions, Subsection 3-8.1, Noise Provisions, Provide for a Hardship Waiver to the Gas-Powered Leaf Blower Pilot Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, Councilmember Little, would you like to, um, to introduce?
Yeah.
Thank you, Council President. As we just had the hearing on this matter, I now ask that the council, um, have the final consideration for this ordinance for the hardship waiver on the pilot gas-powered leaf blower ban for the summer.
I second it.
Uh, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Um, so folks can look for the ordinance. It will be, I believe, post, uh, the, for the, the ordinance will, um, will take effect, I believe, on the 13th. It will be published on the 13th of May. But, um, app, the application will go up on the city's website tomorrow for anyone who needs to apply for a hardship ordinance. So, uh, and if you sign up for the registration as a landscaper, you will, I assume, receive that information as well through the email. Uh, so moving on, we'll go to ordinances for introduction. Um, Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance for introduction?
Yes, ID number 7783. An ordinance amending the supplement and supplementing the Code of the City of Summit, Chapter 35, Development Regulations Ordinance, Part 2, Zoning, Article 9, General Provisions, Subsection 35-9.2, prohibited uses to prohibit the sale, growth, and distribution of recreational marijuana.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Naidoo, uh, would you like to introduce this ordinance, please?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, for those of you who are keeping track of our meetings, you will remember that back in December of 2020, we introduced a ordinance and that was passed, I believe unanimously at that time. Um, oh no, I'm sorry, with one, one, one exception, uh, that, uh, that essentially permitted medical, uh, the use of having a medical marijuana dispensaries in business districts in Summit, but prohibited the sale of, uh, through dispensaries, retail marijuana, or the cultivation or manufacturing of marijuana for retail purposes here in Summit. And at that time, we had a long and extensive discussion. And for those of you who will remember, and as we said at that time, we wanted to get information from the state with regards to its regulations and financials and so forth, in order to make a determination of how we wanted to proceed. After that, the state passed a law. And the law essentially provided for that if municipalities did not, um, make any type, first of all, it negated existing marijuana, um, ordinances such as ours. But more importantly, it said that if you don't, as a municipality, do any affirmative step to opt out of any portion of what was permitted, which was both retail and medical, uh, you essentially would be, um, opting in. And you had to make a decision by August of this year. So basically it gives a six-month window of opportunity. And in the process, the state has been coming up with certain regulations, but it has not finished making those regulations. So tonight, what we're trying to do is keep the status quo and, uh, status quo. Which is essentially to say, we will continue to permit the sale of medical marijuana in dispensaries, but would prohibit the sale of retail, um, as well as manufacturing and cultivation. And if we do so, that doesn't mean that this is a permanent ban. Future councils could look at this issue subsequently. But if we do not do so, we're basically prohibited from putting any type of these types of restrictions for five years. And so that's the issue, that whether we want to get ourselves locked basically into a five-year, you can't do anything. Or whether we want to give ourselves the flexibility of deciding, once we have more information available because of this, from the state, to maybe make a change, maybe not make a change. But that gives the control within Summit rather than being determined by what the state rules are. So that's a long wind-up to introduce this ordinance.
I second. Um, uh, could we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Uh, before I take the roll call, uh, Council President, I'd just like to point out that the agenda says that the hearing will take place on the 15th of June. Uh, that's actually incorrect. It's, it will be on June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be advertised, isn't it?
If I, if I could just, so just so it's very clear to folks. So the way that this works is we introduce it tonight, then the planning board will have a hearing, presumably at their May 24th meeting. And presuming that the planning board goes ahead, approves it, and says that it's consistent with the master plan as it did last time. Then, as the city clerk said, the hearing for this will be on the first meeting in June.
Thank you. Uh, roll call is, uh, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Nay.
President Fox?
Okay, motion carries. So we'll have the hearing on, uh, June 1st. And we'll move on now to resolutions. So we have, um, uh, two finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Uh, this first resolution is number 7852. This resolution authorizes the summary of general revenues and appropriations for the 2021 Special Improvement District Budget. As we had a hearing on this budget earlier and a presentation at the last council meeting, I move to adopt this resolution. I second it.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call on that, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, moving on to ordinance number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7851. This resolution authorizes concurrence with the Board of School Estimates Certification of Required Funds for the Public Schools. As a reminder of the process, the Board of Education created and presented a budget. Then this budget was considered and approved by, by the Board of School Estimate, which consists of two members of the, of the Board of Education, two members of the council, this year, council members Naidoo and Harrison, and the mayor. The total amount that was certified by this group from local property taxes for the purpose of operation of the public schools for the school year, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, is $68,506,754. The final step is for council to concur with the certification of funds. And while the budget represents a 2.4% increase over last year, the school debt payment has decreased significantly. And the total tax bill, including county and municipal portions, will in fact decrease. I move to adopt this resolution. I second it.
There any comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, you know, we, we had the discussion at the Board of School Estimate, uh, about this. And I know there may be some who, who are wondering, you know, this is an increase over the 2% cap. And we appreciate that. And there was a lot of explanation at the Board of School Estimate as to the reasons why specifically it was, uh, happened this year because of, of certain, uh, payments that needed to be made that, uh, that hadn't been in previous years and, and, and cost sharing things. But that being said, I think what folks should walk away with this is realize that when they're looking at how much of their tax dollars are going, we think about overall, how does this fit with what the county is doing, what we're trying to do in order to ensure that this is a fiscally sound managed city. And the fact that we're going to still end up with a reduction of taxes speaks to that fact. And, uh, Councilman Vartan referenced this and we'll talk obviously more about it when we get to the city budget at the next council meeting. But it, people should recognize that, yes, even though there is this particular thing, we look at this holistically and look at how, what, what happens with the overall tax dollars.
Thank you, Council. Anyone, do any other members still have a comment on this? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, last chance, council members to speak up. Okay, so, uh, hearing none, um, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, but?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Motion carries. Uh, so we're moving on to law and labor. Councilmember Allen, would you like to, uh, start with law and labor number one?
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Resolution 7856 to authorize the execution of the lease and license agreement, which allows the Office Restaurant to extend their sidewalk cafe space and liquor license to the front of the UPS store. The UPS store has agreed to this extension, so I look to move this resolution for adoption.
And I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? So this is one of the, um, the pandemic, uh, provisions that we put in place last year. And it worked very successfully at the same location. And, you know, it's a great, it's a great example of how our businesses in Summit help each other out. And the UPS store has, um, gone above and beyond in terms of allowing, um, allowing their neighbor, the office, to use the space in front of their building. And I think it's, I think it's great that the businesses are all helping each other out. And we're, you know, we've had a lot of success with our outdoor dining. So I just wanted to point that out and thank everyone involved in this process. So, um, if there are no other comments, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we have, um, a few law and labor, um, resolutions. Would you like to bundle those, Councilmember Allen?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Council President. Um, pursuant to our closed, our discussion closed session, I'd like to bundle two through five. Each resolution is a request to extend sick, uh, leave with pay. First is for Parking Services, next is for the Department of Community Services, and the last two are for the Division of Public Works. I move these for adoption.
And I second them.
Are there any comments from members of council?
I would just like to say I wish a speedy recovery for all, for individuals.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Any other comments from members of council? Um, okay, are there any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on, we have two capital projects, um, resolutions. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. The first, um, Capital Projects Resolution is number 7853. It's to award the bid for the purchase and delivery of odor control chemicals. Um, and this is for, um, the bid from Evoca Water Technologies, um, for water control chemicals that are used to treat naturally occurring sewer odor within the city's collection system. So, um, these are obviously very necessary and I ask that we approve these, this resolution.
Second.
All right, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, so we have a second, uh, resolution that did not make it into the regular agenda, but it was on the closed session agenda. Uh, Councilmember Little?
That's correct. Um, this is, um, ID number 7841. And this is to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Public Works Division Roads Unit. Um, this was discussed at closed session and, and it was inadvertently left off of the, uh, the open meeting agenda packet. So I'm going to be moving this from the floor. But this is to, um, declare, uh, a vacancy. And it is an essential position in the Roads Division that works on, um, snow removal and roadwork. Um, and this vacant was created, but through the promotion of Michael Caputo in that division and the subsequent, um, reallocation of employees within that, the public works. So, um, I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Uh, I see, I see, um, Ms. Hamlet, you have your hand up? Did you have a comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have a minor technical issue. Uh, I, back to the, I couldn't quite, it was like literally 10 seconds when you asked to, back to the, the sewer thing. Can we go, can we go back? I had a, I had a question.
Do we, how do we handle that, Madam Clerk?
It was like five seconds ago and I, I literally had a technical issue and I just have a quick question. I'm sure that it's a quick answer.
Let me just ask the clerk.
Cause I literally couldn't, I could not, my daughter actually had to get me back into it, so.
Hamlet, um, please just let me ask.
Yeah, no problem.
So, so technically, the vote has already taken place, Council President, but it's your prerogative to, uh, allow the, the comment.
I, I just have a question and I'm sure it's probably, real quick. Uh, so I noticed that we awarded this contract for $68,000. How many bids did we get, number one? And number two, why didn't we get more? There could be a very valid reason. Like maybe this is the only person or company that does sewer odor control. I don't know. But I did notice that today and it was something I wanted to ask all of you.
Okay, um, that would be a question, I believe, for Mr. Strager. Could you, um, address that, please?
There might only be like two odor control sewer companies. I don't know.
Let's, Mr. Strager.
Listen, Ms. Fox, listen, you, you know, you could just be a little nicer. It's.
Uh, would you like to address this?
Sure, through you, Council Presidents, um, the product we have specified by oxide is one we've, we've experimented with, um, several over the last few years. It's the one we desired. And in this area, there only is one or two providers. So though we, we did solicit, um, you know, publicly and reached out to other chemical companies, there was only one that bid in this area. Because it includes the delivery, you're, you're not going to get, you know, a west coast provider of this product. It's just the way it works out, so, uh, but that would be why.
Okay, thank you for addressing that. And Ms. Hamlet, um, that, I apologize, I did not mean to cut you off on that. But I think you've got the answer you need, so we can move on now. Okay? Um, so, uh, we are now on to safety and health. Wait, yes, the safety and health. No, we're still, we didn't vote on the vacancy in the Roads Unit, correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, so we still, so we had.
Uh, no, we did actually vote on the vacancy.
Okay.
I have, I have an indication that we did.
Okay, but I lost track of where we were.
Okay.
Okay, we move on to the two safety and health resolutions. Um, Madam, uh, Councilmember Harrison, uh, would you like?
Thank you, Council President Fox. Uh, I am, uh, moving for resolution. Thank you, Council President Fox. I am moving for resolution ID number 7826, which is to approve the design plan and authorize bid advertisement, City of Summit Fire Headquarters Project. I am very excited to introduce this resolution for approval that, as was discussed early on in the meeting, that this is not, this is just giving our fire chief and the city the permission to go out and select, advertise for bids, and this is a part of the Broad Street redevelopment, but also, which is linked to the fire, new firehouse that we have been discussing as a community for many years. And I would like to, Council President, if you'll permit the fire chief to go into particulars about this after I introduce the resolution for approval, I would appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead and get the hearing open, and then we'll, you know.
So I move this for resolution for approval.
I second.
Okay, so Chief Evers, would you like to speak briefly on this?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilperson Hairston. Yeah, so, you know, this has been about a six-year project in the making. So we've come to the point now where our design team is finished. We've submitted all the documents required to the state oversight to make sure that we comply with all bidding rules and laws governing this project. And we got the okay from the state to move forward. So the next step in this process is to go out and advertise for bid for the project. So that's what we're offering tonight. And after we advertise for a bid, my memo had the timeline of when we've got the advertisement, when the bids would be collected, and then I'll hopefully eventually award a bid to a successful qualified contractor.
Thank you, Chief Evers. Are there any comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Barton?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Hairston, and thank you, Chief, for the introduction of this resolution and the, and the description. I just want to say this is an extremely important step on the road to getting this project done. Our fire department responds to thousands of calls for service per year. Fire department trains and prepares every day to serve the community at the highest possible level. The current fire headquarters is more than 100 years old and has long been in need of replacement. This bid authorization is an important step because it keeps the process moving forward, and the timing is also good because we now have some visibility into the financial picture of the Broad Street West project. The longer we wait to get this project started, the more the cost of materials will inflate, and I'm thrilled that we're taking this step forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Oh, Councilmember Allen, did you have your hand up?
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to say I concur. I'm excited to see this project after all these years finally potentially coming to fruition. And so I just want to say congratulations at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. We've got a comment from Steven Spur. Go ahead, Mr. Spur.
Hello again. I hung in here this long, so I might as well try back in. Stevensburg, 61 Woodland Avenue. Is, actually, this was the, the point that I was referring to in my earlier comment, specifically the chief's timeline that was articulated in his memo shared to, shared to mayor and common council. So my question would simply be is, how much flexibility do, do we have with respect to that timeline? Mr. Rogers had mentioned before that we were expecting some pro forma financials for Broad Street West redevelopment by the end of the year. And this looks to be, again, slightly accelerated from that timeline, but perhaps if someone can discuss how the two are aligned and what we'll give if, if something does have to give to ensure that the community's expectations on financing for Broad Street West redevelopment aligns with this, this expenditure that the, the community is about to make.
Mr. Spur, in answer to your question, when Ms. Rogers talked about the end of the year for the financials, that was the point where we'll be able to present the financials to the public. We already have a, a rough sense of where we are on the finances, and we'll continue to refine that as the bids are, right now, we were just going out to bid. So there is a period of time before the bids come in. And, you know, as, as we go along, we will have a better sense internally of those numbers, but those are not numbers that we can share publicly because those are numbers that we're using in our negotiations with the redeveloper. So we obviously are not going to make those public as we're in the midst of a negotiation. That kind of makes sense. You wouldn't tip your hand in that way. So I don't know if Mr. Rogers has anything further to add to that.
Uh, so there's a timeframe that the, the chief had mentioned as far as going out to bid, and when we would accept bids in June, and then there's a time, a timeframe when we will have to authorize a capital bond ordinance for the project, which would take place, starting, I think, the end of June is a timeline in, in, into July. As far as aligning the discussion around the financials of the redevelopment project and when we would authorize approval of, of a bid, and that's assuming everything aligns with, and, and all the bidders conform, and we can actually award. Just a reminder, we have a capital budget approved, approved amount that was approved back in 2019 for $11.8 million. Certainly, that's going to be considered when we're looking at this project and whatever does come in and is, has met all the required legal requirements and what we could ultimately award to a, the lowest responsible responsive bidder. So it, it, it's not going to necessarily line up. These are things that we're looking at internally to determine whether we're moving forward. But keep in mind that there's going to be, we, we are trying to get this project, and I won't go back into all of the needs of, of why we're actually moving forward with this project to begin with. Yes, it is in the redevelopment area. We, we need to get, have some lead time with this project. So that's why we will, we're trying to time it right now with the discussions going, ongoing discussions with the redeveloper. So it, it's, it's not, it's not something that's necessarily going to intersect at, at, at a point, but we will consider all, and we have considered all, of what we've been discussing and, and, and looking at the financials of this redevelopment project and what ultimately we will spend on a, a new firehouse. So that's the answer, is whether it's official or not, I, I judge.
It's okay. I think I'll buy Mr. Naidu maybe a piece, a cup of coffee, and we can discuss the details.
I'll see, Stephen, I don't have to say anything right now. You're just.
Body on the coffee. Councilmember, we'll answer it now.
That's fine.
Okay, so you have nothing else to say, Council?
Thank you.
Okay, so, all right. Are there any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have one last, safety and health.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I am offering for approval Resolution ID number 7788, which will declare a vacancy in the police department, as was discussed in the closed session.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're moving on to the consent agenda. We generally.
Council President, if I may interrupt?
Yes.
Would you indulge me and take the vote again on the declare vacancy under cap number two Roads Unit? I just want to make sure that we took that vote properly.
Okay, all right. So we're going to go back to, I, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. So we usually take the agenda, the consent agenda as a whole, unless anyone wants to pull out any items either from anyone from the public or on, from council. So if nobody has a request for that, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? Motion carries. We're moving on to council members' comments and new business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? My Councilmember Barton?
Thank you, Council President. Just two things that I don't think were mentioned earlier. There was, I think, a significant decrease in COVID cases in Summit last month, and, and the, the second thing being, the Vaccination Center at the Community Center is, is now available to book appointments rather than having to register, and then you receive notification when there's appointments. You can just book an appointment. So that's easy to do, and I would encourage everyone to do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
The moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? Okay, the motion carries. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.